How far do you feel?
Just linen.
How you doing? How you doing, man?
I'm pretty good.
Turn on the trouble?
I was in Metairie, I was in Hollis one day. And there was a guy in there. He looked so much like you, I had to ask him, I said, you in the county? She grew up in Gundy, don't know. I said, well, he looked just like you, he's a friend. You got a brother somewhere?
A brother somewhere, good seeing you.
All right. City Council of Grantville, Monday, February the 12th, 2024, 6:30 work session, let's come to work. Rise, place, verification and pledge. Our Father, through our countenance, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And give us our trespasses, we forgive those who trespass against us. We shall not temptation, nor personal evil. The knowledge of the King will be our glory forever. In diligence to the black and white states of America. To the people of this stands one motion of God. Human visible, that we do not attempt to overthrow. All right. No comments? Okay. Citizen approval of the, I mean, approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda and adding councilman comments. Council member comments at the end.
It's not on the agenda, so...
I know, but I want to make a motion to add it.
Okay, well, that's, we've already changed how we're doing the agendas. Uh, we do not do council and comments, they're not done at any other city council meetings around the area. This is a business meeting once it's done.
Mr. Mayor, I made a motion.
Okay, do I have a second? Hearing that advance. Okay, do I have approval of the agenda? Do I have a motion?
It's moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I oppose.
Okay. One, discussion on film permits, special event permit application by BH Bondsman LLC. With authorization for the mayor to sign the location agreement. Do we have someone here from the bondsman? Yes, sir, come on up.
Yes, sir. Name and address of this place. Uh, my name is Adam. Adam Citron. I am a location manager for the bondsman.
Okay.
So I sent in all these, uh, these packets of dates and times and things like that. Pass them out if somebody would like to look at them also for, um... Essentially, it's, uh, three days of filming, um, starting at approximately noon each day. Uh, this would require the week before to prep. Um, and three to four days after to wrap up. Uh, it would require a little bit of traffic control while we're, while we're filming also. Um, and do you have any questions, details?
Yes, quite a bit of details, so go ahead and fire your questions, council. Any questions?
Now, Mr. Mayor, could you, could you tell us a little bit about this movie? What, what, what's the theme? What is it?
It's a television series for Amazon. It is about, uh, it has Kevin Bacon in it. And it's about a, um, a man who's a bondsman. And he, uh, basically goes and collects bonds is, is really the whole show.
Okay, and the reason you selected Grantville?
Uh, the look of the, the old historic nature of the, the setting and, you know, cinematic town.
It's focused mostly downtown, downtown area?
That's correct, downtown. Main Street, Church Street, uh, a little bit on the Grange and, uh, some work at the city cemetery.
Okay. Are you gonna have to, um, construct anything or, 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 you know, do anything to the streets? Like, change the appearance of anything or?
Uh, yes, we, we would request to, um, dress the buildings with signage and, and things like that. Uh, as far as the street, no, um, not any major requests.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, how is this, uh, how is this gonna benefit the city?
Well, first of all, it's, it's certainly its notoriety. Uh, it will be in another television program. Number two, as we always require with people who film, that there will be a monetary compensation to the city for this one for the month of March, it's going to be $6,000 for the month of March. But again, I, you know, it's, it's, uh, besides the monetary piece, it will be the benefit of having, you know, Grantville, having folks down here eating in our restaurants, drinking out of our coffee shops, uh, dinner.
I'd also like to add, we, we work directly with the business and property owners here as well and do separate, uh, what we call location agreements or set dressing agreements. And we pay them directly to put those signs on their buildings and, uh, that would certainly benefit them as well.
Okay, well, I was surprised to see this, uh, certification. This is the first I'd heard of it, nobody contacted us, we, we're down, we're on Main, we're downtown, Bonnie Castle. We're downtown, nobody contacted us, so I was surprised to hear about this. How many days will the traffic be affected? You know, what is the inconvenience for the?
It will be for those three days, the, the three filming days will require traffic control. Um, you, you're speaking about the Airbnb over there, the, the old?
Bonnie Castle, the two-story brick.
Right, it's now an Airbnb, is that correct?
Yes, that, that's what it's, it's surprising.
Yeah, so typically before we start any work, uh, we go out and we give out what's called a notification letter. So you guys will be receiving that when, when, you know, we gotta get it approved that we can film here first. But then we typically send out a notification letter. And, uh, you know, any businesses that are affected by our presence, we pay an inconvenience fee to. So, the, the reason you didn't know that was because we have not given the notification letter out yet because we are still in the approval process to film here.
Okay, so there's not gonna be any major changes or any, like, infrastructure or anything like that?
No.
No. Okay, and what, what movie stars are gonna be in, in the?
The, the only one I know of at the moment is Kevin Bacon. He is the lead. Uh, everyone else, we don't know yet. Uh, well, at least my, someone on my level does not know yet. I'm sure it's figured out, but...
That's, that's exciting.
Yeah, should be a good, good little TV show.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other questions?
Is there a possibility that the city will be used later filming too?
Yes, that brings up a great point. Uh, this is a series, uh, this is season one. And, and the way we film television series is we film two episodes at a time, so, and, and they are broken up into blocks. So block one is episode one and two. Uh, block two would be three and four, and, and we have eight episodes to shoot. So this could certainly be a continuing endeavor.
Okay. All right, thank you so much, man.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, discussion on special event permit application for the Easter egg hunt to take place March 30th, 2024. I think that's fairly self-explanatory, any questions? We don't have a year.
This is our annual Easter egg hunt.
Okay.
And it's gonna be downtown?
Ball fields.
The ball?
Yeah, what always takes place, the ball fields.
It says, "Location of the event, 23 U. Colley Street." Oh, that's the ball field, okay.
Okay. All right. Next item, discussion on appointments to planning and zoning commission for a term to expire on December 31st, 2025. We have two candidates here, now I need to clarify something. We voted out Brendan Adams last month. The planning and zoning commissioner has informed us that he has notification from Joe Ward of his resignation. However, we do not have an official letter yet. So as we sit tonight, there is one spot open. However, when we vote in two, you know, February 26th, we could actually be appointed for two spots. It's just that in time for Joe to get the information to us.
Which commissioner is that, is resigned?
Joe.
Joe.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Larger, are you here? Come on up.
How are you doing this evening?
So I, just briefly, why do you want to be on planning and zoning and give the little spiel to the council?
Sure. Um, so for those of you who don't know me, my name is Jared Larger. I live at 33 Hilltop Circle. Uh, me and my wife have lived, recently moved into the area as of about 10 months ago. Uh, which will be one year. I work as a electrical engineer at an engineering consulting firm in Atlanta. Um, we mainly work with architects designing, uh, industrial and commercial buildings, um, higher education buildings, hospitals, stuff of the sort. So I have a little experience when it comes to EDC and, and electrical code when it comes to the respect of buildings. I would like to be on the commission for zoning and planning, um, to kind of have a, an eyesight on how the city's progressing, kind of have a, kind of evaluate it. I know that I'm a very analytical person, as those of y'all who see my posts on Facebook all know. Um, I like reviewing stuff thoroughly and making informed decisions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Larger?
How, how do you see Grantville developing in the future?
That is a fantastic question. I've only been here for 10 months, so I cannot answer that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Larger. I do not see Mr. Spurra here this evening, so we'll move on. Discussion on appointment to historic preservation commission for a two-year term to expire December 31st, 2025. Ms. Cody, you wanna come up?
Hi.
Hello. Thank you.
You got questions for me?
I, I think it pretty much would be questions, you don't need to tell us, so... Okay, questions from the council?
I would really like to get this HP Commission back on track. My understanding is that there are only two members, which means that we essentially don't have an HPC Commission because we don't have a quorum. And I think it's important that we maintain and promote the history of this town because it's important to the livelihood, I think, of the community. So, um, I have been involved in historic preservation for as long as I can remember. So I would appreciate your consideration.
Questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Sarah B. Kelly Auditorium, what is your feeling about that? That's a historic building that we own, and what is your feeling about the building?
I think we need to renovate it. In fact, I was thinking about it the other day. We've got that, and then we've got a male academy that nobody even knows about, that's right across the street from here. Um, I understand that there may be structural problems with that building, I'm not sure. But I know that there was problems, I think, with the air conditioner or something in it. And then there are no restroom facilities, so all of that would have to be worked out, which means that we would need to not only renovate it, but, um, get an architect to draw up some plans that would complement the building and not take away from it. So we can use it, and we have used it in the past, uh, but it's been quite some time.
Do you think the city could qualify for grants?
Yes, absolutely.
To renovate it?
Yes, yes.
Is that, is that, Mr. Mayor, is that something that the HPC could, uh, initiate, get a grant for that building?
No, the HPC cannot initiate that. One of the things I would tell you, Mr. Gresham, you can correct me, I believe it was looked at what it would cost to renovate that building. And that is the whole problem, it's millions of dollars. It's not a hundred thousand, it's not two hundred thousand. There's asbestos in the building, there's, so, I mean, I don't disagree, we need to do something with it. But it is very cost prohibitive, correct, Mr. Gresham?
Correct, it was, we got a grant from the Fox Theater for $31,000. Uh, we matched that. The Lord Ex-Sargent, a bid on the project along with others. Lord Ex-Sargent has a track record of historic preservation. They did a condition assessment, I think it was four years ago. And they determined it would cost at least $3.2 million to renovate it.
It's cost prohibitive, and that's the problem.
Well, my question is, what are you going to do? Just let it sit there and deteriorate?
I think it ought to be...
Or you're gonna tear it down?
Yes, I think it ought to be demolished. I don't think it has any historic significance as a building. And I think that's backed up by the condition assessment by Lord Ex-Sargent.
Could we get a second opinion?
Well, I, I, I will tell you, whether it's that or not, I, I truly, you know, very engineer, it's a pain in the neck assessment. I mean, it's a lot of money to renovate that building. I mean, it's a lot of money.
You will notice that the floor is at a slant. So if you renovate it as a historic building, you're renovating a slanted floor and to a stage that has no side rooms for actors.
Yes, they are, yes, they are, there are dressing rooms on each side of the, of the stage.
Yes, they are very small.
Yes, they are.
They're not appropriate. I didn't make this up, Lord Ex-Sargent gave it to us. They did a consider, condition assessment. Whether you wanna believe it or not, that's what they said. So, I leave it in your capable hands. If we wanna spend millions of dollars, and then what do we do with the building? Who's going to use it? Do we have a user?
Okay, I think we're off, we're off, kind of on the hold here, we're considering you for the HPC.
I'm sorry?
So we're considering you for the HPC, we could, don't need to have a discussion on that building right now.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
I just brought it up, Mr. Mayor, because this is a study session.
Well, but it's not pertaining to why she's standing out there.
Well, thank you for your interest, Ms., Ms. Cody. You'd be a very, very good applicant for that position, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, discussion of ordinance, 2024-01 to establish a beautification board appointed by the mayor and the council, Mr. Clark.
Uh, yes, sir, this has been, uh, something that has been requested by several citizens that we have, um, added to our charter in Grantville, um, for our city. Um, I believe that it will be, uh, it's already, um, big talk about, you know, joining it, being involved in, you know, in this. And it would, uh, overall, um, you know, I believe would make, you know, um, conditions better, as far as, uh, the appearance of certain things and, um, residential and commercial places, businesses, et cetera. Can have awards, uh, like, like per year. There's several things that could be, you know, done, uh, through the committee. It would be, you know, of course, five people, you know, um, appointed by council and mayor. Not really sure what else to add to that.
Questions?
Yes. First, Mark, did you review this? I got a question about where it says they can charge and collect admin fees, just remember.
Uh, I, uh, put it in, in the format here, yes.
Okay, so that's, they're just turning that into the city?
That's correct.
Just clarification for everybody if they read that, so they're not collecting any of their own?
That's, that's correct, for auditing purposes, anything that they collected would need to come to the city so that it's properly accounted for and audited and so forth.
Yeah, I mean, like, me and the city have, you know, a beautification awards yearly, you know?
I'm good, but I just want everybody to understand it's not, they're not having their own little pot of money.
No.
Right.
So, and then the other thing is, um, for these recommendations where it says that they're gonna recommend, like, trees and plants and stuff, the way this is set up, are they gonna recommend that to the council? Like, who's gonna pay for these trees? Are they gonna recommend it to the business?
It was, you know, you know, um, it can be, um, you know, for, like, businesses in, you know, government property, you know, it says in the, you know, order.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, uh, when it comes down to the cost of it, they're just gonna say, hey, we think this is the plan, it's gonna look good.
Yeah.
If y'all wanna do this, this would help your business.
Now, of course, you know, citizens, our business owners can, like, contact them or, you know, assistance on, you know, utilization of other property.
Okay.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, this ordinance seems to have a lot of things in it that the Parks and Rec, the Recreation Board, will they be working together or separate? Or how does it impact on their, with their charge? Something in here about the master plan, that also is done by the, uh, Recreation Board, Parks and Recreation Board. So are they gonna? How's that, how's, how is that going to work out?
You're asking, are their duties overlapping?
Oh, yeah, it seems to me that there are several areas where it's overlapping. And, and my other comment is, where you're appointing, uh, five members, and I would like to see this amended to indicate that each member of the city council would make an appointment. Would have an opportunity to appoint the initial board. Each, each, five of us here, each one of us submit a name for, serve on the board. I'd like to see, you know, the amendment to include that.
I mean, ain't that the case already, like, anybody that wants to appoint or apply can try?
Well, there's a difference in that, like, as example in Newnan, there are boards where an individual council person sponsors and submits an individual person, now they're voted on, it's not appointed, they're voted on. So it was like, I wouldn't make an appointment, you're on, no, they would be, I'm pushing this person forward who had a vote, so they're voted on. So, so, I mean, that, you know, if Councilman Evans doesn't wanna appoint anybody, I mean, what do you do then? You can't force her to appoint somebody.
But if somebody wanted to volunteer?
About a council appointment, then what about do then?
Yeah. Right.
Because that's how it's already set up, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's no different now that, that you can have a volunteer citizen say, I wanna be on this board and sign up to paperwork the city all. Or Mr. Clark can tell, hey, John, go sign up for this, go, I'm, I want you to, I'm the sponsor, you, you go sign up. And then we still have to vote on everybody.
Yeah, the whole council would vote, but I, I would seriously, I would think that there would be a member up here who did not have, would not have a person to recommend to be appointed.
I'll, I'll be one, I might not be able to. I might see, not anybody I can think of.
Yeah, if you want someone on the board, go out there, talk to them, tell them to come up here and apply, add a location, is that simple?
Is that simple?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just would thought it would be a good idea to put something in this ordinance that would state that each council member would have an opportunity to, uh, make a recommendation.
But that is, that, that's there today with all of our boards. That's there today, you could do that today with planning and zoning, with HPC, with...
We started our board with every single member on it, recommended by, by Councilman Clark. Every single member on that board was recommended by one council member. So, you know, that's not how it's operating now, and that's why I was thinking that it'd be a good idea to specify that each council member has an opportunity to make recommendations and not have, like, a blanket...
I mean, there was nobody else interested. I mean, literally, it hadn't been sitting in before, what, seven, eight years?
Yes.
Correct? Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir.
It hadn't been advertised, and it just came to the council, you know, to appoint these people. Hadn't been advertised, the city clerk's office hadn't advertised any vacancies, and it was...
And a lot of those people were even appointed before I even did office.
We, we understand it's just what you're saying, it's been, we agree, it's just, you know, it's kind of there today, you can put some on board.
They're out there and find people, volunteer for these positions.
Because this will probably be voted in at the end of March and, and start talking to folks. I'm assuming, well, we are, no, it's up to you all. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like the city to, to look at, did you write this ordinance, uh, Mr. Mitchell?
Uh, Councilmember Clark provided me with an outline of what, uh, language you wanted, and I put it into the proper format and made some revisions.
Is there any way you could look at this and look at the Parks and Rec ordinance, see if there's any overlap or if there's gonna be any potential problems?
I mean, you know, if you look at, like, number four right here, it said, "After request, after request, the Parks and Rec director, the board may assist the city in rental parks, create evaluation programs." The human equation, or...
Who's the Parks and Rec director?
Shelley Smith. So if Shelley requests the board to help plant flowers at Colley Street or Poe Street or Griffin Street, then, you know, that's between them.
Okay, other questions? All right. Discussion on ordinance 2024-02 to adopt text amendments to the zoning ordinance to establish new zoning districts, R is 15, suburban residential, single-family dwelling district, medium density, and RU 7, urban residential, single-family dwelling district, high density. All right, so what, all we're doing here is we are adding additional residential zoning categories. Nothing is being rezoned. These two were actually taken from Newnan. Newnan currently has these. We, we, we need to plan for the future growth of Grantville. The sewage treatment plant going in opens the door for new commercial and business and residential development. But we need to get ahead of the ball game. Currently, we only really have two zones, well, three, I guess. R six, which is, uh, basically a townhouse, multi-family, and we have R 20, which is half-acre lots. And I'll tell you, folks, no one's buying a half-acre lot these days. So we need to think about the future, we need to think about what Grantville looks like. By the way, the 12 subdivisions we have in Grantville are all on quarter-acre lots. So, uh, planning and zoning has heard this. They hadn't, they couldn't meet at the beginning of this month due to, they were gonna be short somewhere. So I believe they're meeting next week to vote on this. They pretty much have voiced the approval on it, but we'll have their official passing on. So that's what this is all about.
We'll need to advertise and have a public hearing.
Why? It's not a, we're not rezoning progress.
But it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance, and that's what the zoning ordinance requires for any amendment.
Okay, we'll advertise it in paper and have a...
We'll need to run the ad in the paper, and it'll have to be at least fifteen, fifteen days ahead, so...
Right, because this won't be voted on until March. Okay?
So we'll get that put together.
All right.
So how's this zoning compared to other cities on the county?
It is. It is, we took this straight out and... Other questions?
So, so does this mean that any property owner who has a half acre on their lot, if nothing's developed on it, could apply? To put, uh, a small house?
Well, they're, they're minimum size, so I don't believe a half acre is going to work. But let's say they had two acres, yes, they could apply to have a zoning change.
To put a small, smaller structure on that?
How many could you get on?
Well, see, that, that's the thing about this, it, it's not like, oh, well, I can put five on two acres. You have setback rules, you have pieces of land that can't be built on, you have... So it, it, it really will vary as to the land itself that they wanna rezone. Because we'll have to meet all the setback rules, all of that.
And Brennan checks that, so you have... And Brendan checks that, just so you know. Everything gets sent to the engineer to check to make sure it fits within the setbacks.
Like, greatest issues.
Absolutely. So it's, so it's very hard to say, well, on two acres, you can put eight houses, or eight townhouses. Well, no, not really.
But would they, would the structure be connected to our sewer system? Or would it be on the subject?
They will be on, well, again.
Depends on where it's at.
It depends on where it's at, number one. But with the future plan, now, we have a sewage treatment plant going in. And then all of Grantville, all vacant land, all land period will be piped to that sewage treatment plant. It'll go on sewer.
On sewer. So nothing can happen until that plant goes online, right?
Again, there is still the capability of some smaller tracts of land that are already connected close to sewer to do this.
But they still have to go through the entire process? This doesn't change anybody's piece of property?
Yeah, it needs to be rebuilt and everything, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Okay, other questions? All right, move on. Discussion on resolution 2024-01 honoring and celebration of Black History Month 2024. Ms. Barry?
Okay, Mr. Mayor. I gave each, each person up here a copy of this draft resolution. And if it's okay, can I read it?
Do you have to read the whole thing?
Yeah, let me read the whole.
Okay.
A resolution recognizing Black History Month in the city of Grantville, Georgia, and celebrating the achievements and contributions of African-Americans throughout U.S. history. Whereas in 1915, in response to the lack of information on the accomplishments of Black Americans available to the public, historian Carter G. Woodson cofounded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History to recognize the contributions of African-Americans to U.S. history. And whereas in the past, few people studied Black history, and it wasn't included in textbooks prior to the creation of Negro History Week. And whereas Negro History Week was chosen because it includes the birthdays of both Frederick Douglass and abolitionists and the former U.S. President Abraham Lincoln, who led the United States during the Civil War, which was primarily fought over the enslavement of Black people in the country. And whereas the week-long event officially became Black History Month in 1976, when U.S. President Gerald Ford extended the recognition to, quote, "honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every endeavor throughout our history," end quote. And Black History Month has been celebrated in the United States every February since. And whereas, Black History Month celebration was created to focus attention on the contributions of African-Americans to the United States, to honor those first enslaved people brought over from Africa in the early 17th century, and recognize the many African-American citizens, pioneers, inventors, heroes, and she-heroes contributing to history, culture, and the arts in the United States today. And whereas, many notable figures are often spotlighted during Black History Month, such as the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who fought for equal rights during the 1950s and 60s. The late Thurgood Marshall, civil rights lawyer, and the first African-American justice appointed to the United States Supreme Court in 1967. May Jemison, who became the first female African-American astronaut to travel to space in 1992. And Barack Obama, who was elected the first ever African-American president of the United States in 2008. And whereas Governor Brian P. Kemp of the state of Georgia is encouraging all Georgians to honor and reflect on the legacy of so many Black Americans who have made the Peach State better through their lives and contributions. Now therefore, bid resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Grantville in recognition of African-Americans past and present in our community and the nation, hereby recognize February 2024 to be Black History Month and encourage all community members to join in the celebration and recognition of our diverse heritage and culture, and to continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. All right, any discussion? Okay. Ms. Miller, are you in the audience? She's not in the audience.
Okay.
Seeing as how business of the meeting is done, we are adjourned. Now, we will call this special call meeting. The attorney going into a special call meeting. Call order, a special call meeting. We're going to go into executive session pending legal discussions. Do I have a motion to move to executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now going to executive session. Here, green state, but we're basically going to come back in and adjourn. If they haven't turned it on, that's the question.